To order, can I have a roll call please be?
Mr. Delacour?
Here.
Mrs. Shaw?
Yes, here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. Bellamy?
Here. All right, first order of business tonight, acceptance of the minutes from December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Could I have our, any, any questions or changes, revisions? No? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I make a motion to approve the meeting.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, next order of business tonight, appeal number twenty-one, seven, seven, thirty-eight, area variance, Neil Ryan Blaster seeking an area variance section two forty thirty and two forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R forty slash eighty zoning district. My understanding, Barbara, that the applicant would like to adjourn?
You have to open the public hearing first, and then you can do the, yes.
You'll have a continuing.
There is a letter on file for that, too.
Gotcha. All right, so where no more than two accessory buildings shall be permitted in any one-family resident district, the applicant is proposing three accessory buildings. Where no accessory building shall have a footprint greater than twelve hundred square feet, where no accessory building should, I'm sorry, greater than twelve hundred square feet, nor height in excess of twenty feet, the applicant is proposing to construct forty-one-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot pole barn, including a twelve-foot lean-to with heat and electric for storage of tractor and farm equipment. The pole barn would be forty feet by eighty feet, uh, square feet, with a twelve-foot by eighty-foot lean-to, therefore, the applicant is seeking a twenty-nine-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot variance. The property is located at forty-one Didel Road and is identified as tax grid number six-three-five-nine-zero-three-two-seven-four-three-one-two, in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion to open a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, so now the applicant would like to adjourn.
Just see if there's anyone in the audience.
Is there anybody in the audience that was here to speak on behalf of this applicant? No, nobody here. Okay, so would the applicant like to adjourn to the, what was the meeting? Jan twenty-fourth? Right, to the January twenty-fourth meeting. So we will move them, now, now Barbara, we have to keep the public hearing open, correct?
Yes, so you're gonna motion to adjourn this meeting to January twenty-fourth.
Okay. Could I have a motion, please, to adjourn this application to the January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting? You have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, appeal number twenty-two, seven, 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 three, area variance, Cesar Barzello, seeking an area variance of section two forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R twenty zoning district, where thirty-five feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide nineteen point one feet for a house renovation, thus requesting a variance of fifteen point nine feet. The property is located at fifteen Spook Hill Road and is identified as tax grid number six-two-five-seven-zero-one-zero-three-nine-two-four in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion to open a public hearing?
I make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Anybody here tonight to speak on behalf, I think so, I'll speak on behalf of this application? State, please, for the record, your name?
Yep, my name is Adrien Rodriguez.
And you are representing the applicant tonight?
Correct.
Got it. All right, so for the folks listening in and the audience, can you just please briefly describe what you need and why you need it?
Yep, so what we're doing is, um, we're doing a house renovation in the front. Essentially, we're squaring off the house, because right now, there's some odd, um, shapes, I guess, if you will, on the current structure, so we're trying for it to be even all around, in addition to having a porch and increasing kind of the face of the, of the house to make it more appealing.
Gotcha. Yeah, we were all out there on Saturday, saw what you got going on. We got quite the project ahead of you. You got a lot of topography to deal with on the rear side of the yard, so there's really, really no way we're gonna be shifting this in any one direction or the other. We can see it's basically the front porch that you were extending, right in front of the house. I, I know you guys, we were out there, we got a pretty good look at what was going on, did a nice job of marking it out. I, I don't have any further questions for the applicant, unless somebody else does.
I had a couple of questions, sir. The front steps, you, on the plan, you are saying there will be one, two, or three steps?
Yeah, I think it's probably gonna be less than that, because the grade and the existing conditions, I don't think it'll be high enough to have three steps. I think it'll probably be either one or probably even at the grade.
So it may not come out as more?
No, it'll be less, yeah, we won't be needing three steps, I don't think, that's what he put on the plan, but I don't think they'll be needed.
The porch will have the roof on it?
Uh, yes, there's a, yes.
And there's nothing in the front, over the porch, front, front wall will not be covered? It'll be open, right?
It'll be an open, yeah, not closed. Oh, no, there's no screening or, no.
So that's one of the concerns, um, if we grant permission in the future, we'd like to keep it open, rather than in like five years from now, okay, let's make it a room, I think we'll have some concern.
Oh, yeah, no, I think, uh, it'll look, in my opinion, it looks more appealing, open. I think closed, it'll look weird, um, for me, but.
But never know after, after a while, somebody say, okay, this is extra room, and we'll be more closer to the road, and then we like to see. So that's the only concern I have, if we give it the okay.
Right, so you, you, really what you're saying is you'd like to make it a condition?
Right.
We're gonna make a condition of, you know, if we go ahead and approve the variance, to make a condition that the open, the porch would have to remain open, it cannot be enclosed at any time in the future?
Sure. Yeah, I accept that.
Anybody else?
I have no questions.
Nope.
All right, anybody in the audience have any questions, concerns about this application? You're gonna have to step to the microphone and tell us your name and address?
Hi, my name is Delia Engstrom, I live at twenty-one Spook Hill Road. I don't really have an issue per se, I know the existing structure has been there for ninety-some-odd years, I'm not quite that old, but I know. My family has been in the area for three generations, and we're familiar with the house. I know there's just not a lot of usable space there, this is my first time at a zoning, um, meeting, so I'm just not sure, um, what information, I guess, the neighbors, including myself, are privy to about, um, the construction that's going on. I know that you guys ran into a snafu a year ago with, uh, blowing up the gas line and shutting down Spook Hill Road for a day, and they've been working really hard and everything, and it's been great, I just, um, wanted to know if we're privy to like what the plans are, other than a front porch, like is the structure going to remain like one level at the street with the basement level on the back, is it going to become a huge structure as the garage has become, just kind of wanting to know.
Right, well, their, well, their variance that they're before us tonight is specifically for our front porch.
Right.
That, that's all it is, their front porch is gonna be a little closer to the road than our code allows?
Sure, yeah. I mean, they don't have a lot of usable space between Spook Hill and.
Right, exactly, it was pretty close as it is, right? And they've come before us to ask for some relief, so they could put that front porch on it, you know, the rest of the structure doesn't require any variances, all the other renovations, whatever they're doing there, doesn't require any variances, so it would meet our code.
Okay, so it wouldn't matter if it became a three-story house, or stayed a one-story house?
Well, it would if it needed a variance, right?
Right, right, right.
If it doesn't.
Okay, that's fine, we just, you know, it basically was on behalf of.
But, but for you, but for your information, you can always come into the building department and foil the building permit and look at the plans.
Okay, sure.
They are increasing the size of the house in the rear. I don't think it's a second story, I think they're finishing the underneath, they're putting.
Right, yeah, I mean, the house was in pretty bad shape, so.
But, um, just for everyone, because we're on TV, anybody can foil something to look at it under the Freedom of Information Act.
Even though my family's been in the area for a long time, we've only been back for about two years, so we just, like I said, first time coming to a meeting and didn't know really the process, and I wish you guys all the luck on getting the house done and stuff, just wanted to.
Put a project in front of them.
Yeah, definitely, thanks, guys.
No, so thank you. Thank you. Anybody else tonight? Alrighty, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Could I have a motion, please, to grant or deny the applicant a variance? I will make a motion to grant the applicant the variance. Uh, I don't believe the benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means. It will not, uh, make any undesirable changes to the neighborhood, it will certainly improve it, I'm sure. Whether the request is substantial, it is somewhat substantial, but that in and of itself is not enough for me to deny the variance. Whether the request will have any adverse effects on, physical or environmental effects on the neighborhood, no, it will not. And is the, uh, alleged difficulty self-created, yes, it is, but still, all in all, I am going to make a motion to approve the variance. Can I have a second?
Second.
Will second with stipulation.
Oh, the condition on the porch?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you, B. Yes, we want, did wanna put the condition of approval, that the porch would have to remain open. If anybody wanted to change that in the future, they'd have to be before us again. Now, that's approved, could I have a second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, roll call please be.
Mr. Delacour?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, your variance has been granted. Good luck, thanks. All right, next up on the agenda tonight is a discussion, appeal number two-two-seven-seven-seven-four, area variance, Children's Enrichment Project LLC, seeking an area variance sections two forty thirty-seven and two forty sixty-two A of district regulations in an HM zoning district, where two acres is required, the applicant can provide one point four acres to allow for a private community or fraternal recreation club, thus requesting a variance of zero point six acres. The property is located at two-three-two-one-dash-two-three-two-five Route nine D, and is identified as tax grid number six-zero-five-seven-zero-two-nine-eight-seven-five-eight-zero in the town of Wappinger. Anybody here tonight to represent this application? Thanks.
Sorry.
You're no worries.
Call for the town attorney.
Just, uh, as soon as you get set up there, just let us know who you are and which relationship there's to the applicant.
Brian Stokosa, Dan Stokosa Engineering, uh, here tonight for a variance for area. We have an existing site on Route nine D that the applicant has purchased, and they wanna do a fraternal club, um, onsite, used to be an old furniture, um, building, used to, they used to sell furniture out of it for a number of years. It's got an existing, it used to be the existing showroom, right, and then they had a caretaker's apartment, and they had a small barn next to it. Uh, what the applicant wants to do is come in with a private fraternal club, um, children's activities will be operational during the day, and sometimes on the weekends. And basically, it's a membership-only, um, club, strictly, they limit the amount of members that they have in their club, not open to the public, so what we're, what we've planned on doing is we've got, we have a site plan in front of the, uh, the planning board right now, but, uh, we show parking delineation in front, um, where the district parking lot is, the existing two-bedroom caretaker's apartment will remain, it'll be, uh, member-only, so there'll be members in there, it wouldn't be open to the public. And then just, uh, doing some rehab inside where the old furniture gallery used to be, so there would be like, uh, offices upstairs, um, like member offices, storage, bathroom, little break room, and then down below, there'd be like enrichment areas, where they used to like showcase the furniture downstairs. Some of the exterior modifications we'd be making is, uh, just adding like ADA compatibility, we do a ramp, um, off the side, and we're gonna show some handicap parking near the entrance, the side entrance, with a hardened surface, um, other exterior elements, uh, we're gonna continue the, the three-rail posting beam fencing around the site, uh, some landscaping in the front, doing like an earth berm with some evergreens, evergreens on top, to kind of just cut up the, the noise from Route nine D, uh, to the structure. No entrance modifications, we're gonna keep the same entrance the way it was, um, and then we're just gonna freshen up some with the lighting, continue the same theme, more of a classic style, full downcast, full cutoff, um, and that'd just be like a freestanding light pole matching the scene that's on site. Other than that, that's all you're looking at from like an exterior modification, um, looking more internally to infrastructure, we have an existing septic on site, uh, we were out there with hearing sanitation, um, we found the septic tanks are in good working order, the fields itself are a little bit undersized, so we do have an active, uh, application with the board health, we're gonna upsize the septic slightly, and then provide some reserve area in case there's ever a failure, standard health department stuff, um, so we've actually gone ahead and modified this plan, um, responding to planning board comments, and also with our, uh, health department, um, submission. With this site, we don't expect, you know, major deliveries, maybe a box truck, typically just passenger, you know, commercial trucks, small pickup truck style entering the site. We do, in our, in our planning board application, we did show that emergency service vehicles can enter and exit the site without conflict. We also, as part of our planning board application, reached out to New York State DOT, um, they were okay with the entrance as it is to remain, um, and they were amendable to, you know, the landscaping, uh, features that we're adding to the front of the property, so that's kind of it in a nutshell, um, again, here tonight, because we're undersized, you know, for a club to be in this hamlet zone, you have to be two acres, we're one point four acres, so we were hoping to seek some relief in, in that respect.
Gotcha, gotcha. Now, there's, there's three existing structures on the property now?
Right, so if you're looking at the property, the bigger structure, used to be where they have the furniture showcase, straight ahead from the entrance is the two-bedroom caretaker's apartment, and then over to the, to the left is the old garage. Right now, there's no, there's no plan to occupy the garage, it's just maintain the garage for storage, uh, for anything that they would have, um, so it's to remain and.
So all, all the structures are staying?
Yes.
Chicken coop?
Chicken coop.
Looks like it, hey? Chicken coop in the back?
Yes.
That as well? That's there as well?
What, what would the typical daily activities, uh, consist of?
Enrichment programs for the kids, um, we have the applicant here, she can speak more toward like the day-to-day operations, Laura, I don't know if you can look it up and just speak to that?
Please, your name?
Laura Tabatsnick, Garrison, New York. It's a private, uh, membership club for families, so we would be doing, um, kind of, and it's more nature-based, so it's stuff around gardening, permaculture, um, uh, you know, nature classes, inside arts and crafts, enrichment programs, um, for the families, which would be, you know, music, movement, martial arts, things like that. But it's, as Brian says, it's a private membership fam, you know, association, so it's, we're not open to the public.
What would be the typical age of the children?
Uh, it's gonna be families for different ages.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
The, the size of the, of the lot is one point four acres?
Right.
And you need two outdoor activities? I mean, are you gonna need two acres to do what you have to do?
We're not, no, we just, we just need the variance.
Yeah, they, they, they only have one point four, right? But they need two, two.
For the use.
Is it gonna be too small?
No, it, the plan, the plans we have with, you know, gardening and hopefully having chickens, et cetera, um, is, one point four is perfect for us, so we, we don't need a bigger size, just to change, is what we're hoping for.
What, uh, what would the typical number of people be that are kind of using, utilizing these, uh?
We'd have, um, between six to maybe eight, nine families.
So, small, small groups?
Got it. All right.
Would there be any occasions where you'd have more people on the site, you know, thirty-plus cars, people parking in the?
So what we did, that was a question that came out of the planning board at our last meeting, so when we did our, uh, let's say, initial submission to the planning board, we described parking requirements related to the maximum amount of families we typically have between, you know, six, eight, ten, right? And there's always that peak period where there could be an event or something, maybe some additional guests would come. So what we did is we, we looked at, um, since there's no real parking standard in, um, the code for this type of use, we backed into assembly space, so what we did is we looked at the assembly space on the first floor, we detailed that on the, on the plan, and what we did is we came up with, I think we're at fifteen hundred square feet, plus or minus of assembly sta, space on the first floor, we backed into one space per hundred, so we basically showed eighteen spaces, so it, even though it's, I think we're parking heavy based upon that assembly space, because we do control who comes in sight, you know, we do provide for, let's say, a, a peak condition where there is eighteen spaces as well, people to park, and we can still maintain normal traffic, even if it's in and out of a center.
Yeah, understood. Is there any more questions?
The, the eighteen spaces are basically back-to-back, that's kind of what this, this plan's showing?
Right, so when we made this application, um, we just met with the planning board, because we referred to you from the planning board to seek the variance, um, since the submission that we made, we moved away from the valet-style parking, so now we have a set of parking with, we have like the first row of that valet parking, and now we have some spaces directly in, in between the barn and the patio area, and now we have a couple of spaces facing next to the handicap spot that we show, um, in the front of the building.
Okay, so, so the plan we have doesn't show that, though?
We have an updated plan, obviously, as part of our, our planning board submission, so, right there in that, that, that configuration that you see, we have fourteen.
Yeah.
All right, and then on our newer application for the planning board, um, we have eighteen spaces, but, again, they've been situated that, you know, we're not double-stacked.
Okay.
Gotcha. Okay. Anything else? Okay, what we normally do is a site visit, and we like to come out to the site, uh, not this Saturday, but next Saturday? The twenty-first, so the twenty-first of January, we'll come out and take a look, be helpful if you're there, or somebody's there representing, you know, we could give us a rundown once we get out to the property, see what's going on. I don't think we really need anything else when we get there, we could see everything's existing, so.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll forward, you probably, I'll forward you a PDF through Barbara, or the, um, of the latest planning board update?
Yeah.
Um, maybe do a couple of copies that you can have, uh?
Sure.
Do you guys have a time?
Yeah, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock?
Yeah. And what we will also do is schedule, uh, your public hearing for twenty-fourth, should know that, we're gonna schedule you for a public hearing on the twenty-fourth, okay? B is gonna give you a sign, what you're gonna need is you need to stick that in the front yard. And then, uh, I think that's it, and then we'll see you on that Saturday, and then we'll see a public hearing. Thank you, all right, you're welcome. Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, appeal number twenty-three, seven, 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 five, area variance, Jeanette Sotland, uh, seeking an area variance section two forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R twenty zoning district, where twenty feet to the side-left yard property line is required, the applicant can provide fourteen point eight feet for the legalization of a six-foot by twenty-foot deck, thus requesting a variance of five point two feet. The property is located at eighty-one Edge Hill Drive, and is identified as tax grid number six-three-five-eight-zero-three-one-three-five-two-five-zero in the town of Wappinger. Anybody here tonight representing this application? Please step up to the microphone and stick your name and address, please.
My name is Jeanette Sotland, eighty-one Edge Hill Drive.
Gotcha, so brief description of what you need and why you need it.
Okay, so, um, my dad had, my, well, my parents have passed away, so we're in the process of selling the house.
Gotcha.
Um, my dad had built a deck onto the house many, many years ago, probably about forty, fifty years ago at this point, um, and it's too close to the property line, so I am, um, applying for a variance.
Gotcha, pretty straightforward, looks like. We love surveys, especially the ones with the stamps on them.
That's always special.
It's always helpful. Gotcha, yeah, pretty straightforward, I think. Guys, any, any questions? I mean, you got, you got the survey shows the deck, shows the distance, which is nice to have. I don't have any, any additional questions, if anybody else does, you know, we're, we're gonna plan on doing a site visit at your house, at this house as well, oh, we'll do that on that same Saturday, which would be the twenty-first.
Okay.
Probably be there about nine-twenty-ish on the twenty-first, we'll come out, is there any way, excuse me, to identify the rear property line? Either by, uh, is there any stakes in the ground, any, any survey or stakes, anything there is?
Side, right?
Side.
I'm sorry, yeah.
On the side.
There is, so, what would be helpful, as if, if before we get there, if you could mark it out, either just paint it, you know, on, on the ground, or put a string line up, or, just something so we could see the proximity of the deck?
Sure.
To that, to that property line?
Sure.
Yeah, so, do you have to go crazy with it? Okay. Any other questions, you guys?
No.
Ready? All right, so we will see you then on the twenty-first. We're gonna schedule you for a public hearing as well on the twenty-fourth, and you'll have a nice little sign in the yard, too.
Yes.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I assume you don't need a variance for the shed?
What?
Yeah.
Barbara?
I'm sorry?
This has a two structure, and one is deck, which is at fourteen point eight feet, but there's a shed which is thirteen point one feet. Don't, does it need variance, or it was already done before?
Fourteen point eight feet to the deck.
For the deck, and for the shed, which is on the right side, is thirteen point one feet.
That's, the shed's fine, it's under a hundred and forty-four square feet, so it only needs ten feet to the side, and it's legal.
Yeah, it's time to make those texts, yeah. Okay. Next up on the agenda, appeal number twenty-three, seven, 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 six, area variance, Frank Legardo, seeking an area variance section two forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R twenty slash forty zoning district, where no accessory structure can have a footprint greater than six hundred square feet, nor a height in excess of twenty, uh, twenty feet, the applicant is proposing the construction of a forty-foot by sixty-foot, a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot detached garage, thus requesting a variance of eighteen hundred square feet, where fifty feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide thirty-five feet for the construction of a forty-foot by sixty-foot detached garage, thus requesting a variance of fifteen feet. The property is located at one thirty-nine Curry Road, and is identified as tax grid number six-one-five-seven-zero-one-four-seven-five-six-two-two in the town of Wappinger. Anybody here tonight speak on behalf of this application? Please step up to the mic. Hello? Name and address, please.
My name is Frank Legardo, I live at one thirty-nine Curry Road, I'm the owner.
Gotcha. Please give us a brief description of what you need and why you need it.
Just looking to put up a garage, uh, because I have a lot of property there, and it's perfect for it, and, uh, I'm a carpenter, construction, that's what I do, and I play with boats, and cars, and trucks, and motorcycles, and trailers, and lawn mowers, and log splitters, and I just have a lot of stuff, and it'd be nice to put it inside the garage. and I just have a lot of stuff, and it'd be nice to put it inside the garage and have it like that. Kind of like storage, and just to get it.
How big is the property, am I missing that someplace?
It's almost point seventy, I think.
Point seventy?
Zero point six.
About three quarters of an acre.
Yeah, a little under three quarters of an acre.
So we just have, it looks like.
Did you have a plan that shows the relationship of the garage to the house?
Uh, there's a survey.
Does anybody have a survey?
Are you talking about this?
Uh, no, I actually had a survey in my folder. It's a stamped survey, with a garage on it.
Yeah, we, um, we have it.
Yeah. There it is.
Got it.
The garage, forty by sixty.
Did the driveway then continue across the front of the property, or are you thinking to add like another curb cut?
I'm here, it's for open for suggestions on how to do it, you know? I really don't have any way to do it, I'd love to just have it come right in off the street right there. It's level, and it's, it's all flat.
So you're not entitled to two driveways on a single-family residence?
I'm sorry, what was that?
You're not entitled to two, you can only have one driveway.
Okay.
So you would have to come across the property.
All right.
Or change the driveway. Like, close up the one you have, and then open it to the garage.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open for that, I don't know how I, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I know the wellhead is right there.
There's no way to connect the garage with the house? Again, if they're connected, it's not a detached, or it's a little bit, a little bit easier.
Yeah, it's just the metal structure, it's the vinyl siding, and it's a versatile building, and.
I mean, if they're connected with a heated vestibule.
It's kind of far away from the house, pretty far away from the house.
You'd have to shift it over, yeah?
Yeah, quite a bit.
Yeah.
Looks like. They have to be shifted quite a bit.
Yeah, I was actually hoping to put an inground pool on to the house and the garage.
Okay, so you have plans for that space between the two?
Yeah, I, you know, that was my plan. You know? So I'm here today for suggestions, you know, and I'm willing to change the driveway if I have to, you know? Um, I don't know.
Well, yeah, if you want, if you, if you want to be able to drive off the road to the new structure, you would have to change the driveway.
Okay.
Now, you can't have two.
Okay.
Can he get a variance for a second? Is that something they can ask for?
Yeah, anything that's.
So his property is pretty small. Just as an example, when somebody on three seventy-six with like eighteen acres wanted a twenty-four hundred garage, he wanted to see everything inside of it, so to then ask for another driveway. I think you've had it scarified like a driveway.
Yeah, we do, and I actually have some gravel there now, where it is.
How big is your house, square foot?
My house is, it's like sixteen hundred square feet, I think, the first floor. And then I have some living space upstairs, too, and I had an addition. I mean, I built the entire house, so.
Okay.
It's like forty-four by forty-five, I think, with, uh, eight hundred square feet upstairs.
Just seems like with this plan, the whole, the whole front area is going to be paved, paved, which is not an ideal.
Do you have a garage on your house?
I have a two-car garage attached, but, you know, the fumes and the smell, and really, it's just for.
So, so he has a two-car garage? So this is how many bays?
One bay. One garage door in the front.
But, but by all practical purposes, it's a two-car garage, two-car plus.
It can be a multi-car garage, really.
Right.
It's, it's pretty big.
And, and the existing garage you plan to keep, it's not like you're going to convert that into living space?
I could, you know, I could close off the whole front of the house, just get rid of the whole garage doors and. You know, that would talk a lot of extra money.
Yeah, if, if the plan is to get rid of that garage, and get rid of that curb cut, and do a new curb cut at the new garage, that might make more sense, I think, potentially.
I'd have to close up the garages, get rid of the blacktop in the front, you're saying? Like, I'm just, I'm open for this, I mean.
Yeah, if, if you change the curb cut, right, if you change your, where your driveway entrance is now, and put a new driveway entrance to the new structure, the existing one would have to be closed off.
I mean, that's a lot of pavement for that, what that survey shows, for that driveway as it is. So, you, you say about adding it across the front, but think about how much is going to add to this gar- garage, and he already has a lot.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the whole front will be pavement in, in this plan, essentially.
Right.
Yeah, if you were gonna, yeah. If you, if you were thinking about leaving the existing driveway, well, where are you going to put your car, in the new structure?
Yeah, not for nothing, I, half the time I park it up there, and I walk in my back door, I really don't use the front, you know?
Because what we're saying, if you, if you wanted to utilize the new structure as your new garage, right, then you'll probably end up paving or doing something, right, from the existing house to the new, new structure. What David is saying, then, essentially your front yard becomes your driveway, you know? That would be a little, a little tough.
Yeah, how much of the front yard do you have to pave? I mean, I'm, I'm just saying.
Well, no, that would be up to you, you don't have to pave any of it.
That's what you would want, right, to get between the two. I mean, I guess you could pave nothing, you'd just drive over gravel or, I mean.
It's a lot of impervious surface.
Yeah.
For, for even for water.
Right, right.
What if I, do I have to blacktop it?
No. No, you don't have to do anything. I mean, you could leave this all grass, we're just saying if your intention was to park here, right, you would be driving this way, right, to get in here, so you'd probably end up putting something here, gravel path or something like that. But that, that's really, you know, sort of, for you to decide. It's a, the, the, the structure itself is a pretty big structure, right? A big structure, there's large variance that you're looking for.
Correct.
Is, is there, is the size, the forty by sixty something that you are dead set on?
Uh, like I said, I'm open, you know, I'm, go for big and, you know, yes, I mean, I want that, of course, we all want it.
Right, right. Yeah, do, you know, by our code standards, it's, it's a large building.
Yeah, yeah, I'm aware of that. It's just the property and where I'm located is so out of the way, and just, nobody's really down there.
Yeah. Well, I, I think we, we, we obviously need to go, go check it out, right? Yeah, we're going to do a, a site visit. And I, I think maybe it'll give us a better understanding of what your property is about as well.
Okay.
When we get there, that weighs in a lot on our decisions, you know, when we make them.
I mean, I, I personally think this, this size would be difficult to approve, and in the past, we, we haven't. You know, we've done more like, you know, fifty percent more, or some more like twelve hundred square feet. Like, you know, just so that we're not, you know, wasting your time, it might be worth thinking through, you know, your needs and what, you know, if there's, if there's other options, you know, on, on your end.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand, I just, I, I looked at the, the plot plan, and I saw my side length, you know, which is like, I think, a hundred and something feet, you know, and my front, you know, I, I saw that I could get this size garage within the, the bound, you know, the setbacks of the front, the back, and the side, I have plenty of the property, that's why I was like, ah, let me just shoot for that, you know? Uh, because I'm within it, you know? But, uh, when they did the, the survey, I, it was my mistake putting thirty-five feet on the front, you know? And, and I do understand it, like, if you take the setback from the front, the setback from the back, you come up with fifty-five. Well, sixty, I believe it is. You know, and I can put in there, you know? So that's why I was like, I could go to fifty-five feet if you'd like, you know? Um, just to stay within the limits of the towns, you know?
Yeah, I think that the setback is a little less of a concern, though it is a concern than the size of the building.
Right.
I think more the, the size and placement of the building, yeah.
I, I think what David is saying is, you know, in the next week and a half, right, will, will you be at your house on Saturday? Thinking about what you really need as a size.
Right.
And then we'll discuss that with you further, you know, when we're there, see exactly what you've got going on.
Yeah, I mean, I have two sons, my family, I have a very large family. We're into a lot of things, you know, boats and everything, and just, you know, the town, I've, I've had issues with like trailers on there, and you know, you can't have more than one registered, uh, car without a trailer. I'm like, well, if I could put it all in the garage, then it'd be good, you know? So, that's one of the reasons I like to do it, too, you know?
Sure.
Because, you know, like I said, I have two young sons, and this is my son Craig, and, you know, so.
Did you, uh, did you have any, uh, any drawing of what the building is going to look like, and?
Uh, it's a versatile metal building, I submitted some plans there, you know? It's kind of like just a.
Can you just take it out to them?
You know, there's pictures of it, and there's, uh, engineered drawings they give you at first, because I'm not going to drop fifty thousand.
Because of what we have.
Not really know what you guys are going to allow me to do, you know?
Subtle.
Comfortable with.
Hey, do you have septic and well on this site?
I do.
And that's, that's in the back, basically, is that?
Yes, it's directly behind my house, it's brand new, I put that in in two thousand and six. I drilled a branded well in the front, which is on the survey, I did that in two thousand and six.
About the height of the building, is it meet?
I think it's on the, the engineered spec thing, when they, because I told the guy, um, because I need, I want to be able to get kind of like a tractor-trailer in there, too, you know, like a freight truck, you know? Um, because I like working on vehicles, you know? And, um, it's kind of high, so the garage doors will be like, I don't know.
Fourteen by fourteen.
Fourteen-foot garage doors, so.
You can't have a vehicle over ninety-five hundred pounds, so commercial vehicles are not allowed in a residential neighborhood.
In the garage?
On your property.
Yeah.
So.
That's just something I'd be interested in, you know?
I'm just, while you're here, you know, it's almost like you said back, if you could get it back to the fifty feet and get rid of that variance, that's good. And you have, it looked like a hundred and, you have a pretty deep property.
Yeah, yes.
You know, so this board should only be giving you the smallest of variances. So you have a hundred and sixty-one feet that I don't see why, unless the topography I'm not seeing, if you could push it back, that at least would get rid of one of them.
Uh, yeah, I did, I did mention that, and I think in the application where I, what, it said, you know, as a suggestion, and would you be open to what, you know, and I did answer that in the, uh, paperwork that they gave me, you know, how I'd be willing to go. Like I said, you know, I'd meet, as long as I meet the front. The surveyor put that thing on the front, that messed everything up, so. I would, I would give you the survey when it's all completed.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you need fifty to the front, fifty to the back. That gives you sixty-one feet to play with, I don't know how deep this is, but I think you could get it into that.
I would do a fifty-foot deep garage, you know? Because by the time you put a boat in there on its trailer, with your truck, you know, and backing it comfortably, you know? And I have two ninety-seven Fords that, you know, we have in the garage now, we're rebuilding, you know? It's just, we're always tinkering with some. You know, it's just how we are, I guess, I am.
Got it. So when you're looking at, you know, with placement of it, like Barbara said, if you, you know, we could massage that variance request a little bit, if you had to reposition the building somewhat?
Absolutely would, yeah. If you guys come out, if I can hopefully be there, um, you know?
Okay.
Discuss it.
We should do, I mean, really not much here to see. I mean, just really, uh, you know, an image that, that's a metal building.
Yeah, a computer-generated image, I mean, they're all over the internet, YouTube, and, you know? Friends of mine have put them up, you know, they're fairly simple to put up, and they're all engineered to New York State, whatever you guys require.
Yeah.
But, you know, they want their money first, like anything else.
See, you know, we, we might want to do, though, B is, I think, is to make copies of the survey and this, and get it to us, you know? Um, okay, so, let's do this. Uh, moving forward, we'll, we'll schedule the site visit for that Saturday. Uh, that would be the twenty-first.
Okay.
Nine forty-five-ish, you know, we'll be there.
I'm out, I don't work anymore, I'm disabled.
Gotcha.
I got a really bad motorcycle accident last year, so it's another reason why. It's always been a dream of mine at Curry Road. I love Curry Road, I love where I live, my neighbors are really all great, you know? Alden and Brownie are actually all for this, they love my sons, they, I raised them there, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah, but that's a great time, I'll be there, you know, anytime.
Would be helpful, is if you could, you could put maybe four pins in the footprint, or, or, you know, hang it out or whatever, so we get an idea where that building is.
Yeah, the, um, I had a stake survey done, and we do that, you know, but I, I want to move it a little more, a little closer to the house, you know? Because you'll see where the gravel is when you come there, where I'd like it to be, you know?
Sure.
And then just go from there, I might move it around, you know, is what I'm saying. I'll, I'll move it, make it smaller, bigger, you know? But my son and I will stake it out where you will, you know, where we want it to be, and then.
Sure.
So, so, you know, pretty much after this, we can approve lesser variances, but we can't approve, you know, a greater variance.
Right.
So, as long as you're, you know, going in the, in that direction, it's, you can shift it within reason.
Right. So, I guess what we can do, since we're all just talking right here, is, I mean, my son and I can stake it out for like a forty by fifty, you know, and I know that's within the footprint.
Right.
Guaranteed, you know? Where it'll go, you know, and we can do, like you said, we'll put the four corners in, so when you come out there, you can see where it's actually going to go.
Yeah, sure.
That works, you guys.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine, it's a good start. You know, and we'll, we'll do that, and we'll get a, a, a pretty good feel where, you know, the building and where you want to put it, how big it is, right?
Yeah.
As, as it relates to your property.
Right.
And we'll be able to, you know, make a better judgment.
Yeah, that's kind of why I went by the forty by sixty size, because you guys, you know, can tell me what you would like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, and we'll definitely toss that around.
Are the property lines marked out pretty good on the back and the side?
Yeah, they, I, I still have, I think, two stakes in the ground, in the back. You know where the one is in the front.
Okay.
And there's another one in the, in the other, other front corner, but that's not really, you know, where it is. Thank you.
Good.
See you.
Okay, what's that? Yeah, so Saturday the twenty-first, I got nine forty-five, we'll be there.
Perfect.
Uh, we're going to schedule you a public hearing for the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
And B has a sign for you.
All right, and at the twenty-fourth, what could I possibly expect to leave here, you know? On the twenty, I, I just like, you know, say, hey, and maybe I'm going in the right direction, maybe not, you know?
Two possibilities, we could have more discussion, and we'll have the public hearing, which means we'll open up, uh, to, to the public, any comments anybody may have, your neighbors, whoever has an interest in this. Uh, we can deny or approve the variance at that time, or we can adjourn, and if we want any more discussion about it, you know? If you want to toss around a little bit more, have more discussion with you, you know, say, listen, what do you think about this, or think about that? And then we could do the public hearing, uh, following meeting as well.
Okay.
Adjourn. So it's a couple of possibilities on which way it could go.
Okay, all right. Perfect.
Okay, so we'll see you on the twenty-first?
Yes, nine forty.
Great, yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pleasure meeting you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up, appeal number two-three, seven, 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 area variance. Frank Verdi, seeking an area variance section two forty thirty-seven of district regulations in an R forty zoning district, where no more than two accessory structures are permitted on a single-family parcel. The applicant is seeking an variance to allow a third accessory structure. The applicant is looking to add an eighteen by twenty-four-foot prefab shed. The property is located at sixteen Daniel Sabia Road and is identified as tax grid number six, three, five, nine, zero, two, five, zero, seven, six, four, three, in the town of Wappinger. Anybody here tonight to represent this application, please step up to the microphone?
Uh, good evening, uh.
Name an address, please.
Frank Verdi, uh, sixteen Daniel Sabia. Yeah, we moved up about a year ago from Long Island. There was a shed on the property, but it wasn't in the right spot, uh, so I was a little nervous about it. I called you guys, and I said, you know, have them get rid of it, so we got rid of that one. And I didn't realize, uh, they considered the gazebo we have, a little gazebo as a structure, they told me. So that was counting as two. And, uh, we didn't realize that. So we, we want to build a little shed up in the back there to store things, and, you know, a little hobby kind of thing, nothing fancy. No electric, no nothing. Uh, nobody could see it, it's a large property.
How big is the property?
Uh, I think it's twelve or thirteen acres, I think I've bit off wood and I can chew, uh, but we're trying to deal with a little, you know, to store weed whacker, I have to, you know, little tractors and things. So, hoping you would consider letting us, uh, do that. Uh, you're welcome to come over and take a look, um, we appreciate it.
Yeah, sure.
It's a prefab, uh, actually a tough shed, they call it, from Home Depot.
Tough shed?
Tough, tough shed.
Oh, yeah?
They built it there, prefab, so. It's, uh, they built it there, prefab, so... So... Yeah, they, I think they submitted plans and things to show you.
Gotcha.
So we're hoping, we'd appreciate it if we're, you know, consider, uh, letting us go ahead with this.
So, so our variance then, really, Barbara, is just the, the additional structure?
Right.
With no, no setback variance?
Yeah, the shed, the size is only four hundred, yeah, it's like four hundred and thirty-two square feet, so it's...
Right.
I mean, this is a huge site, I mean, we've approved these in the past, we're not just voted this, and not, like, I don't know that seeing this would be useful.
I have a question. Just looking at the, the top, topic, topic?
Yes.
Topical map, topography map, and then looking at the required variance, um, it said the shed is the third structure on the property, because there is a house and a gazebo?
You have a hay barn, too, right?
Uh, it was, I think he had horses, it was like a walk-in thing, uh, for the horses, it wasn't like a closed, you know.
Like a stable?
It has a roof, though.
It has a roof, yeah, it was, was like a, something like that, but we were considering, like, you know, using that for storage, but, uh, amount of work it would take, you know, to close it in and permit, so we just thought, uh, we would, uh, go with a new shed, you know, for storage.
So, so that's existing?
So even, as long as it has a roof on it, even if it's for wood, or whatever, it's still a structure?
Yes.
So between that and the gazebo, that's the two, and this would be the third.
That's correct.
On this very large plot.
Gotcha.
So I'm, I'm missing the stable, I don't see it, that's why.
It's, yeah, it should be on it, I, I...
So you're gonna keep the stable?
For now, yeah, so it's like a walk-in, they call it, it's, you know.
Right.
It's like open.
It's open, yeah.
Yeah, um...
It's open, too.
And where is it, in the back of the house, is it...
Pretty close to the, where the shed is gonna go, you'll see it, if you guys, you know, take a look over there. Basically, store my things, nobody could see this, not in the neighbors, it's, you know, nothing that's gonna bother anybody.
No, the reason I ask is, 'cause the way you have it written is, you're, you're, you're saying you have a house and a gazebo, and you wanna add a shed, your house is the main structure, you need...
My house, yes.
Yeah, so that's not really a, you need, your two accessory structures will be your gazebo and your new shed, but now...
No, we're not counting the house, he has a hay barn that he's...
That's what I'm saying, it's not written correctly, that's all I'm saying.
So the building permit says he has a hay barn and a gazebo. And I actually need clarification, you have, build a prefab, prefab located sixteen by twenty-four, and then in the size of the strict structure, you have eighteen by twenty-four.
Yeah, it'll be sixteen.
It's sixteen, okay, so then we have to change it, 'cause it's only three hundred and eighty-four square feet.
Yeah, uh, some reason they, uh, a little confusion with that. Yeah, just, uh...
So we're sixteen by twenty-four shed?
Sixteen by twenty-four, just, um, you know.
Got it. And that's the third structure.
Yeah.
Got it.
That's, that's it, you got it, you, the, uh, gazebo, which is not enclosed, just...
It's gazebo.
Gazebo. Gazebo.
Got it.
She's shy, all right. So we appreciate if you consider it.
Sure.
Uh, if there's any additional thing you would need from us, we'll comply, you know. And that's about it, so you're welcome to take a look, anytime.
So what we're gonna do, we're gonna do the site visit.
All right.
So, so we'll be there on the twenty-first. Excuse me, uh, we'll be at your home on the twenty-first, January.
Twenty-first, okay.
Probably about ten o'clock.
Sounds good.
You're, you're number four or five on, on, on the list, so we'll be there about ten o'clock, and we'll take a look at what you got. Be, be great if you can kinda maybe put four pins in the ground where you're gonna put the shed.
You'll, 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 you'll be, you'll, you'll see exactly what's going on up there. I'm gonna be away, so my daughter, Dr. Valente, will be there.
That's fine.
And, uh, she'll, uh, hopefully, you know, be there about ten o'clock, you say?
Yeah, about ten o'clock on the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, I appreciate it.
So we're gonna schedule you for a public hearing on the twenty-fourth, so you'll be back here on the twenty-fourth. And B's gonna give you a sign that you could put in your front yard.
Uh, again, we'll be away, so my daughter will hopefully, uh, be able to come here.
Yeah, no problem.
I appreciate it, thanks a million, and...
Just have the location, you know, kinda staked out, you know, where you're...
Yeah, you'll see it, there's a, it's all, it's, it's actually a foundation there already that we put, we kinda went ahead, I, we, we weren't sure about any of this, so you know, they came and staked out where we were gonna put it, and they gave me the guy, and I said, all right, this has been going on for months and months, uh...
We know.
So, uh, I'm like at the point where it's like yes or no.
Please, give me some relief, just like...
Yeah, that's it, I, I told her, I said, it's, we don't, you know, if there's any problem, uh, okay, we'll move on. Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
You're welcome, yeah. We're done. No other business for the board this evening, all right? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn?
Have a second?
Second.
My favor? So move, we are adjourned.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the...